Meeting of the Lisbon Town Council to order, could we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, Twyla, the roll call?
Um, Councilor Bowie is absent, Councilor Bickford is absent, Councilor Cody is here.
Here.
Councilor LaRicheau.
Here.
Councilor Lunt.
Here.
Councilor Mason.
Here.
And Councilor Palm Lo is absent.
Alright, and our first item of business?
There's nothing under public hearings, so we can...
There is.
Vigilance license for something fishy.
Alright, I will open that public hearing to the public, if anyone wants to speak on Something Fishy, we will, uh, open the podium to you.
Hi, thank you, my name is Les Buzzell and I am the principal owner.
Please take the podium.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I was talking loud.
As long as the camera doesn't always pick up if you don't speak to the microphone.
Hi, good evening, my name is Les Buzzell and I'm principal owner of Something Fishy. I just came up tonight to introduce myself and invite you all down to come visit us. We're new business in your area, uh, we're here to support you as much as possible and hopefully we can add to the community. I just came up and that's all I meant to do.
Thank you.
To meet all of you.
Good to meet you too.
Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to speak at that public hearing? Alright, seeing no one, I will close that public hearing. And our next order of business, Twyla?
Is under the audience participation, at this time those in the audience who wish to address the council may come forward, please use the microphone at the podium.
Alright, Mr. Fillmore?
You'll have to excuse me, I'm walking a little gingerly. I only have three, this is Larry Fillmore from Lisbon, I only have three items tonight. The one is that Mr. Van Tynen took off the website, the assessment database. And we've asked to have it back on, no was the answer. However, under his contract now, he's required to post his work on the Trio database. So, if he's posting it to the database, why can't we have it back on?
He's posting new data as he collects data into the Trio system, still does not, we are still two to three years away from having a complete accurate database. And he does not want to post it until he has that done.
Even if we put a disclaimer out there, saying we actually know that it's not correct right now?
It's, no, he won't do that.
Okay. On 3 May 2011, the council voted to bond $100,000 for the repair of the bridge and the road on the Fisher Road. Okay? Now, this is a carryover from several years past. They didn't have sufficient funds to do both the bridge and the road, so they needed some additional funding. And so, the town went ahead and approved that bond for $100,000. That was in June. Today, well, Friday I should say, Friday I went down and checked out this bridge to see the condition of the bridge. I didn't charge you for these, by the way, okay? There's copies of the bridge showing the deplorable situation that that bridge is in. Okay? This should have been, in my opinion only, because of the way that bridge is, should have been one of the first projects done this summer. Now, I asked if there was an RFP on the Fisher Road Bridge work. And the answer is, the project will be bid in the spring. Okay? If you look at those pictures, I'm not quite sure it's going to make it to spring. The other thing is, there are absolutely no signs warning anybody about that bridge that's traveling on the Fisher Road. Okay? And that's wrong. We should at least post some signs out there showing that this is a danger point, that you're passing at your own risk, or whatever you want to say, I don't care. But I don't think it's fair to not do anything, okay? And have people traveling that road thinking that road is safe. And I, if you look at those pictures, you'll see that I don't think it's safe, you may, but I don't. So, I think we need to do something now and get that moving.
I do want to address that, actually, I climbed in under this bridge back before when we were dealing with the funding for it. And it does look terrible on the top, but the underside of it looks a lot more structurally sound if you actually go under there. I think it'll hold up probably a couple more years at least.
First of all, uh, the reason we didn't go out to bid this year is because the DOT and asked us not to do that this year because there wasn't enough time. So, we were asked to put it on hold by the Department of Transportation. The Department of Transportation actually did inspections on all these bridges several years ago. And, uh, this was the one that they considered their highest priority, but they did not say it was not safe for travel. So, uh, that's why we did not do anything with it this year.
Right, if you look at the underside of it, it actually has big concrete blocks, or, you know, stone blocks actually, and it's much more solid looking up above than it is on the roadway, or down below, sorry.
I'm going by those pictures and the condition of that bridge.
Oh, I know, I've been there personally.
I didn't crawl underneath it, trust me, I'm too big to crawl underneath there. And I'm not about to. But at least put warning signs up for people so that they know what's going on a little bit, so they are aware of where we are in that.
I believe it's already posted for large trucks, isn't it?
Friday it was not posted, I was there, if you look in the pictures, there's no signs. Because that was the first thing that I noticed was, we should at least tell them what's going on, you know? And the last thing is, according to Chairman Lunt, the council did not want to provide citizens attending workshops with handouts of the information going to be discussed. And they didn't want the handouts posted to the website. Why is this? Is there no transparency in Lisbon? Are the citizens considered mushrooms, kept in the dark and fed crap? That's an easy fix. You do it for the council meetings, so it should be a no-brainer to put them on there for the workshops. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fillmore. Anyone else from the public would like to speak? Go ahead, Dot.
Dot Phil Fitzgerald, longtime resident of Lisbon Falls. First, um, I wondered why there were no handouts on the agenda. The agenda is posted on the town's website. And, uh, I wondered about, you know, things on the agenda. So, I called Twyla about a month or so ago and she told me how to find them. So, I went on Friday, went on again Monday and again today, and no hands out on, handouts on the agenda. Uh, I know there's not a lot on the agenda, the Lisbon Emergency Vacated Building on Lisbon Street, Scott Benson's website, uh, whatever, but I looked expecting to find something and there was nothing. Why was there nothing on it? No handouts. No agenda.
There were, there were no handouts on, uh, most, all these items, on the Finance Director's Report, Lisbon Emergency, there's nothing, there's no paperwork for that, Dot, where it's just a discussion. My report was done, it wasn't up there. It was up there. Okay? Was the Finance Director's Report on there?
No.
She may not have finished it in time to get it up there.
Even this afternoon?
And Mr. Benson's doing a website presentation tonight, so there's no material on that.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you. Another thing, uh, at last Tuesday's workshop, uh, you were discussing streetlights. Of course, I cannot speak, ask questions, make comments, it's a workshop and I've been told in uncertain terms that I'm not supposed to do that. Uh, but I have heard some comments on the streetlights that have been removed on Main Street going up from School Street. I've heard comments that it's very dark, uh, people hesitate to walk there, they don't feel that it's safe and that there is some vandalism. I know you're trying to save money, the town is trying to save money by removing streetlights, but there are some that, areas that really should have streetlights, where people walk at night, kids walk at night. And I wonder if there's any way of putting one or two streetlights back on that section of Main Street.
Well, once we have all the streetlights removed that we have asked CMP to do, the engineer, city engineer, Public Works Director and, and the police chief are going to revisit those areas and, and evaluate if there's a need. We've only had three requests to have lights put back up. So, um, at this point, uh, we're waiting till it's all done.
Okay. Sometimes people hesitate to call town office for whatever reason and maybe they could go kind of door-to-door, knock on doors and, and ask people their opinion instead of waiting for, for the residents to call. I know it's an inconvenience and whatever, but it probably might be the right thing to do. Let's see, what else? I was going to talk about the bridge, but that's pretty... Mr. Benson is going to be giving a discussion and of course I won't be able to talk or make comments. Uh, I called Mike Cody a few weeks ago. Uh, Mr. Benson is talking about gateways, making them attractive and everything. And going to Lowestand, on the right-hand side, there are two garages that are in really poor condition. I know, you know, business might not be the best, but I was wondering if maybe Mr. Benson had visited them or could visit them and say, ask, is there something we can do for you? Is there some way we can help you? Improving your, the looks of your, your, your building and your site may help to improve business. And also, right after that, just before Glamour Pool's on the right, there are two buildings kind of set back, they're in deplorable condition, the roof is gone, part of the roof is gone on one of them. And I asked Mr. Cody about that. The two business, two properties on Village Street were condemned, one is being torn down. Well, but one has been gone and the other one, you're looking for bids to tear it down. Those two are in deplorable condition, they're an ISOA. And Mr. Cody said, "Well, I can't do anything about it because there's no ordinance on keeping your properties up in good condition." To me, that's a poor excuse. Something should be done to those two buildings, ask the owner to tear them down, to remove them. This is the gateway. Any comment, suggestion?
If they're a dangerous building, we can ask them to tear it down. If the buildings are structurally sound, we have no ordinances in place to request them to tear them down. We're infringing on people's property.
They're in worse condition than the two that the town took.
I can't address that issue because I haven't been inside them. I, I know they don't look very nice, Dot, and yes, I agree, it would be nice if we could get people to clean up their properties, but, uh, as I keep hearing from some of the councils, it's tough times for everybody and, and I'm sure money is not going into their buildings at this particular time, but we can certainly ask.
Those two decrepit buildings are in poor condition, they're in worse condition that, not the garages that I'm talking about, the businesses that are still operating and, and being, and owned, but it's the ones between the second garage and Glamour Pool. Doesn't anybody drive Route 196 and observe these things? Those garages are kind of off the road, but they're an ISOA. It would be nice if something could be done, let the fire department burn them down, something.
Oh, my! Hey! I wouldn't do that.
Why? They did Village Street.
Well, they, they got chastised for the last time doing it, you don't just go in and burn somebody's building down, Dot. You just don't do that.
You'll go to the owner, you have the town records, don't you? You certainly must know who owns them and go to the owner and ask permission. Thank you.
Thank you, Dot, and I think we all agree that that is, that Gateway definitely needs some work. Just go ahead.
One thing we've got to be very careful, if we start putting ordinances on the books for people to keep up their property, this is not a very, uh, good time to be, uh, demanding people to put money into their properties. It would be nice if everybody could do that and would do that, but if we as a council was to impose something like that, uh, only thing I could say is beware of what you wish for, what you wish for may not be what you really want.
Alright, anyone else in the public would like to speak? Okay, seeing no one, we will close that portion of the meeting and we'll move to the next item.
Next item is the Consent Agenda, any council wishing to have any item listed removed may do so now. If such an item is removed from the Consent Agenda, it shall be considered as the next item of business after the Consent Agenda. Seeing no items to remove, Order 2011-190 to approve a vigilance license for Something Fishy in the minutes of September 27th and October 4th.
Do we hear a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'm second.
Alright, all those in favor? And opposed?
Order passed, four zero.
Alright, and the next item?
I'd like to make a comment before we move on, I'd like to welcome Something Fishy to Lisbon and, uh, we're glad to have you here. We've heard a lot of good things about you and your businesses in Thompson and Brunswick, have been very much appreciated and, uh, welcome aboard, we really appreciate it.
Alright, our next item?
There are no council orders, resolutions or ordinances, so we'll move to other business, the Finance Director's Report.
Hello. Sorry, just getting the right page. Um, so this is your report for September. Looking at the revenues, um, under the tax commitment account, there will be a journal entry done to assign the portion of the commitment that relates to the school department to the school. So, you'll see that, um, uncollected balance of, um, the, excuse me, the over-collected balance of $5,275,788 that will be reclassed, uh, to the school department. And that should be done by the end of October. Excise tax is just over 26% collected and right in line with where we were at last year at this time. State revenue sharing is just over 20% collected with an additional $27,000 that came in at the end of September for a total collection of 24%. So, we're right on target with that. Um, the transfer station has taken in the majority of the revenues that they will receive from permits at $22,000. This is slightly under what was budgeted by around $6,000, though we will see that come down a little as the year progresses since we do still distribute permits. The rec department continues to be on track at 38% collected, as does the library at 52% and Beaver Park at 53%. Um, that's really all I have for revenues at this point, do you have any questions for me?
Any questions from council? Alright, I think we're all set there then.
Alright, moving on to the expenses. Uh, last month there were some questions as to the percentages on some of the expenditures that were over what we would expect to see for this early in the fiscal year. To summarize my response, it primarily has to do with contract terms and when payments are made. Um, most annual contracts have been paid out and therefore, that's inflated the percent expended at this point in the year. So, while we, while we will still see some increases in those lines for future expenses, the majority of the cost has been incurred. Uh, for example, under town manager, contract, contractual services at 69%, this relates to our auditing fee. So, we've already paid our auditing bill for this year and though we may still have other expenses come through on that line, we've paid the majority of the one that was budgeted. Outside of these, we seem to be right on track with expenditures. The fire department has performed their mandatory ladder and pump testing and has incurred additional repair fees to correct any issues found during such testing. Public Works has expended, uh, for striping, hot top and other various roadwork. And we've made our annual county tax payment of $574,198 at the beginning of September.
Always dreadful.
Yeah. And that's all I have for this month on expenses unless you have questions for me.
Any other questions for Jessica?
Real quick on a side note, we are at the end of the rush for tax collection on the first half installment. As of September 30th, we have collected 92% or 4.4 million of the September portion of the tax commitment. Um, and I've been continuing to work on preparing the draft financial statements, including the footnotes and management discussion and analysis sections and have sent those to the auditors for their review. So, hopefully we'll be hearing back with those soon. And that's all I have for you.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
And our next item, Twyla?
Is Lisbon Emergency Vacated Building on Lisbon Street?
Oh, just that. Uh, today was the last day that Lisbon Emergency has occupied, took occupancy of the building. They are supposedly completely moved out as of today. So, the council needs to discuss what they would like to do with this building. We have a couple of pending issues that we need to decide tonight. One is if, um, we want to keep the water and gas on, uh, as well as electric power. I need to be able to give the utilities people a, uh, answer tomorrow where that we're going to leave these on and change it to the town of Lisbon's name. That's one thing pending. So, I can get that, when we get done, before we finish on this subject. Second, there's been several different ideas on what to do with this property. Roger Bickford, uh, came to me, uh, at our, right before our last meeting and had been approached by several people and thought it would be a good idea if we used that building for storage. Chief Galapo and I had, had talked about that off and on for the last couple of months once we knew they were leaving, um, and that's another option. We have, uh, instead of the 5,700 that we were going to spend to put up a garage, we could use this building for storage, um, it has heat. Uh, so we could move some of our antiques and create quite a bit more space in our working fire stations as opposed to having them used for storage. Plus, there might be other areas throughout the town, I know we have a storage facility back here that the police department has, so it is, it has security and whatever. But that, you know, that's a decision that this council needs to really weigh in on. Um, I know Fern has talked about putting it on the auction block or putting it out to, and have it sold. Um, I gave you a, a draft of what the, the size lot, it looks like, it's in the village zone. So, it's quite a bit that could be done there if somebody wanted to purchase that. We have a value on the land of $24,000 and on the building, $21,600 for a total of $45,600 at 80%. So, you gotta take 20% off that, so it doesn't have a lot of value on the books. It's, um, a building that's being held together with cable on the inside and, uh, to hold it from coming apart. Our thought process was that if you took the second, you know, level off the upstairs and put a roof on that, it would probably take the weight off the lower level and, and keep it from spreading out. It's just a kind of a guess, but, um, we're looking at maybe $20,000 probably to put a roof on it, tear it down and put a roof on it. But that would, you could hold that off and...
Is, is there a sprinkler system in that building?
No.
Then why would we want to keep water to it? If there's nobody's going to be, you know, if, if we sold the property and somebody purchased it, it would be a matter of turning the, uh, water back on and if there's those... Yeah, well, the thing of it is, is why pay for it if we're not going to be using it? And also, if there was a problem this winter, it could run up quite a bill as the property across Avenue did.
The, um, my recommendation would be the idea that we hold a workshop as soon as we can on it and actually have a full night discussion with the full council. and actually have a full night discussion with the full council. I think we just have to be open to ideas whether or not it's... Guess it'd be nice to have all the facts as far as for, you know, what, have someone actually give us an actual cost, what it would be if that's the direction we wanted to go, if we were going to adapt it. You know, I had actually approached Steve. Myself and Mark and Mark's dad actually took the tour of the new emergency barn, which is really nice. I've actually gone on all out and I've actually got quite a bit of debt in the process. After I left there that day, we were talking about different fundings that the towns do and the fountains don't. And one of the things that I know that Lisbon used to do is support the Lisbon Emergency a little bit more than I have in the past few years and mainly because of budget-wise. And my thought was, and again, it was just a thought that I mentioned to Steve, and it was just an idea to throw out there, is the idea that, you know, we were actually, at the time, Lisbon actually approached Lisbon Emergency with this building and worked with them to actually help them out. And that's kind of what the idea was with them, idea of them purchasing it and actually redoing this building for their barn for long term. But since it hasn't proven for them to be a very suitable building or cost-effective to redo it, if we were to sell it, I don't think there'd be a lot of value coming from that property. But my thought was, is, I mean, if the council would consider the idea of the proceeds actually going to help offset some of the costs of the new emergency ambulance barn. I mean, it kind of, it's one of those things with that. I don't know if that money may help them a lot more than it could help us in our upcoming budget. It was just a thought, that's all. I mean, it's one of those things where if it does get to that point, if it could be actually fixed and used as storage, I mean, I know the building as it is right now wouldn't be a very suitable fix. And that's why they're moving out. But I think, I mean, I think it's worthwhile for us to have a workshop and spend the night on it, just kind of going over the plus and minuses. And, you know, one's going to be an ongoing expense for us. The other one could be if it was sold, a source of income, so, you know.
I know we used to give them $15,000 a year. So, you know, if you sold it and gave them that, it's basically what we used to give them in a year.
It was just a thought of possibly, just in good gesture. Because they actually did make quite an investment in that new building. But, I mean, that's just something for us to consider, that's all.
I agree. Go ahead, Roger.
One thing that I would be very skeptical of doing is putting our old fire equipment, that is a history of our town, in a wooden structure. If something happens to that building, if it burned or if it collapsed, the fire equipment, the antique fire equipment, is not something that I think we should take too lightly. That means a lot to a lot of people. And in a wood structure fire, there wouldn't be much left of that antique equipment. And that's something we are taking into consideration when we consider using it for that purpose.
I think we probably have the most suitable people that take that in consideration if we're storing their equipment, so.
I have a question. Are any of the butters interested in the...
Eva Vincent, who lives next door, has expressed an interest in purchasing the property. I told her that we were discussing it tonight. And I get back to her. She's called me several times and we're going back and forth. So something I can address that we're going to have a workshop on it and talk more.
I mean, I agree with you, Roger. We hate to see the expense, but I think for, as far as the heat-wise and the idea of power-wise and stuff like that, I mean, I would think that we could possibly keep some of that on until we actually decide what we're going to do with the building, I would think.
I agree with power, but I'm talking water. I mean, if you're not going to be using the building or somebody there to monitor it, a water line breakage can do a lot of damage and run up a very large bill very quickly. And if we're not going to use it, just shut the water off. You can leave the power on. I mean, as long as it's not reused, you know, just for security.
Transfer the gas and electric into the town's name.
Until we decide. I mean, I would think that we should, I would like...
You won't be able to heat the building.
Right, not let it freeze up while we're trying to argue over what to do with it.
That's exactly where I'm thinking. With the cold weather coming, that could freeze and have a pipe fracture, you know.
Mark, may I?
Yes, go ahead, Frank.
I would just like, when we do do a workshop, to maybe just come forward with three to four options and basically have them all laid out really well so we're actually well informed to make a decision on what the options would be. And with those options, possibly, you know, what we'd get for revenue and what it would cost us to revamp the building and what it'd be used for. Just, I mean, I think it's an important, I mean, it's something people drive by every day. So, I mean, I think we need to make sure we do it right, that's all.
Yep, I agree with that. Schedule a workshop for that.
Very good.
Sooner the better, if possible. I know we have quite a few ahead of us, but...
I'm going to try to squeeze it into the ones we have coming up.
Yeah, it sounds good.
I'm sorry. Did you planning off a bit, but squeeze it in.
All right, so you're all set on that? Okay, we'll go to our next item, and Twyla?
Town manager's report.
Just for those in the audience who are watching, Mr. Van Tynen's crew is out starting their revaluation. If anybody has any questions or concerned about somebody wandering in the house, still call the police department just to make sure. They do have IDs so they can be identified. If you have any questions, call the assessing office and speak to Kathy or you might get one of them in there. They'll answer any questions you have. But they will be going out several days a week, starting on today. And so far, Alan Gold says he's had a real good response for some of the people who've been home, so that's encouraging. I sent each of you a notice, our email we got from Scott Kelly about his plans. He's getting ready to button up that whole site. He'll lay the pavement down and do the front. And he's cut everything underground all set. He'll continue to work in the back leveling as long as he can. But he'll move forward more quickly, I think, in the spring. Judy Goddard is already planning the Thanksgiving dinner and her crew. The Knights of Columbus have requested that they be used for volunteers. They stepped up, so she never looks at, down, took them and said yes. The RFP for the demolition of Three Village Street is out. We have some environmental stuff we have to do, but that will be, our first reading will be before you on the next meeting on November 1st. So, and Twyla has some stuff she wanted to talk about.
Yes, in regards to absentee balloting, I wanted to let you know that the surrounding towns in Andersgoggin County will be placing an ad together. We want to let our citizens know about the new statewide deadline for ordering absentee ballots. So anyone who needs to order an absentee ballot for the November 8, 2011 election must do so by Thursday, November the 3rd. Absentee ballots can only be issued after this date due to extenuating circumstances such as being maybe an impatient at the hospital or something. If you would like to cast your vote by absentee ballot for this election, you must contact the clerk's office or your town office no later than November the 3rd. Ballots can be mailed to you or voted in person at the town office. Additionally, I wanted to let you know that on our website, you could find more information about absentees and you will also be able to review a sample state and local ballot if you're interested. Our phone number is 353-3000, extension 112, if you'd like to call and ask for an absentee to be mailed to your house as well.
Thank you, Twyla.
You're welcome.
Go ahead, Steve.
Just so if anybody's interested in attending, Roger mentioned it earlier. Next week, on the 26th, Chief Brooks and I will be presenting our concept of moving Andersgoggin County's dispatch to Lisbon. That has been, like I had said a few months ago, that had been come back on the table. There's quite a bit of back and forth disagreements about what needs to be done. The county, I commend them for trying to get this off the square and get it done because before it's forced upon us. But we still have a lot of work to do. But if anybody's interested, it's at the courthouse in the library from 2 to 4.
All right. Okay, and Twyla, the next item?
Is Scott Benson about the business website?
All right, hello, Scott.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Counselors, good to be with you again, as always. I was kidding with Councilor LaRochelle today that we have a short agenda tonight. So I would take that opportunity to have a good, long talk with you over the next few hours, but in all seriousness. I come to talk to you tonight about, and we can either go up with the lights or down with the lights, whatever, whatever's comfortable for folks. We are going to be looking at the wall over here, so maybe the lights...
Good idea.
Good, thank you.
Perfect.
I'm here to talk with you about a new initiative in my office that is called Shop Lisbon. And that is the name that we have given to a new online business directory that is hosted at our website, lisbyme.org. I'm here for two reasons, to inform you as to what we're doing. And then, secondly, to use this opportunity as another opportunity to market this service to our business community because their participation is really important to the success of this initiative. So, we'll begin. This is a WebQA pilot project. WebQA is a national firm. They provide web-based customer service fulfillment platforms. And that's just a long way of saying that if you have municipal websites or school website, business website, and you interact with the public in the course of that, they provide several services and products that help you do that in an effective manner. They are presently launching something called ShopsQA across the United States, which creates online business databases for municipal websites. And the purpose of that is to promote local commerce. Lisbon and Bitterford are the two communities who have been selected as Maine's pilot project for the company. They're doing two projects in each state in the Union as a means of getting some momentum for this product. So the benefit to us, because I happened to pick up the phone that day and happened to have a good, early working relationship with the folks out there, there is no cost to the town of Lisbon for the first year of this project. And in the agreement that I signed on behalf of the town with them, there is a nominal monthly fee in year two and every year thereafter that we elect to remain active in this. I'm hoping it's going to be such a success that we'll just continue doing this for the next several years. Okay. So Shop Lisbon. Again, it's an online directory of Lisbon businesses that's available through the www.lisbyme.org municipal website. And the initiative formally began from my office this month. The first thing I did was give our friends at WebQA a database that had been created in my office, I don't know how long ago, but it was populated by my office. And it's a baseline information. You've got to start somewhere, so that's what we did. We gave them our businesses as we knew them in that, as far as that database goes. And these things change from time to time. And it's not an impeachable source. But in any event, we gave them the name of the business. We gave them a business category, if you will. We gave them some baseline addresses and phone numbers. So the focus now for me, now that that's been created, and we'll look at it in a minute, the focus now is in getting businesses, both existing and new, getting them registered and entering their information on the site. And that's, again, one of the reasons why I wanted to come and talk to you a little bit about this tonight. Overall goal is to use this online directory to promote the products and the services of Lisbon businesses to a local and a regional audience. And if we share this information in a user-friendly way that Shop Lisbon allows us to do, we can contribute to increased economic activity for Lisbon businesses. That's why we're doing it, to help. It's just another form of marketing. Let's put it that way. And we're trying to reach the people who need our products and services. The internet allows our message to be carried to even broader audience, statewide, national, even worldwide audience. And the Shop Lisbon directory will be searchable by business name, business category, or keywords. So that's just another way of saying that, you know, if I was a new arrival in town, let's put it that way, and I had a dog and I needed veterinary services, type that word in, and providing we have some in here in town, the results would return. We'll look at that in a minute. The benefits of this program for businesses. There is no cost to the businesses of Lisbon to register or use this product. Okay, so there is, I'm not selling you anything, folks at home. This is free. It provides businesses with a website if they don't already have one. If they do have one, it links to those websites. Or there's social networking websites like Facebook, Twitter, so on. There's a host of different capabilities that comes in within a very free and easy web interface to use if you're not somebody who's worked a lot with website development or anything. It doesn't matter because it's a very, very intuitive, simple way to get your information posted on there. And as a business owner, you have the opportunity to develop unique mailing or what we would call, in this case, follow lists. And again, we'll talk about that in a minute. Shop Lisbon benefits for residents. So you can elect to follow certain businesses. And if they happen to post a coupon for a sale or a promotion that they're doing, you'd be informed via your home email or whatever email you elect to use. You'd get, the system will automatically trigger. If you sign up for this list, it'll automatically let you know, hey, there's a coupon for so-and-so. And that same premise applies as well to employment opportunities. If our local businesses are hiring, this is another way they can advertise that opening. And conversely, our residents, if they're looking for work, can go on here and elect to follow one or more several companies. When those companies make those decisions to expand their workforce, they'll be amongst the first to know. You can, as a resident, a consumer, a customer, you can determine the location and business hours of various businesses. You can see menus, other business documents, and you let your imagination run wild. I would use menus if you're a restaurant, but there's any number of different applications you can use. You can view videos and photos of products and services. You can see product and service reviews, again, using the restaurant model. If the restaurant gets a favorable review in the local paper, they can link it right there. So if you're searching and you're looking and you're learning about a local eatery, you can say, oh, you know, it's, you know, it's got good reviews. So you can also ask questions. You can get on email lists and join those mailing lists so that, you know, if you have a question for a business, they'll get your inquiry straight away. So, okay, I'm going to try not to screw this up. And I'm always a little nervous about the internet. But here we are at our www.lisbyme.org. And this is our municipal website. But there now in the middle of it, and you can see where I'm pointing there, is that icon which says Shop Lisbon. And this is the portal in which you enter the directory. Now, I should be clear about a statement I made a little earlier. It's not hosted in the same place that this site is hosted. It's integrated in all respects, but it's hosted out there in very robust servers at WebQA. But, so when I click on this, I'm going out that way to their place. But everything looks and feels like our site. And that's an important piece of this. So this is what it looks like right now. So we click on that, and let's hope we still got internet connection here. We do. So when folks click on that icon, that's what they see. And it gives a little bit of description of what they're looking at. And I'll just, real quick, you know, I talked about signing up for email notifications and stuff. Folks who want to do that can go here. The folks that I'm hopefully speaking to tonight, some of our business owners, their very first step would be to go to here, register my business. And I'll just show you kind of really quickly what that looks like. And this is how they get started. So they would give me here their email. They would enter it into this system. And then they would tell me the name of their business. And then they would just simply hit submit. Okay, I'm going to hit cancel now. That comes, goes through the pipes out there to WebQA and then comes back to me within an instant. And I know now that another one of our businesses is trying to sign up for this. I go, I have some basic administrator software, and I'm able to go in right away, oh, so-and-so signed up. Look at their, sort of the entry information, and then I approve them, which allows them then to populate their page. And I'll show you an example of that here in a minute. Hopefully, that's going to go back. There we go. It's coming. See? Never integrate the internet into your presentation, folks. Helpful hint. All right, so this is what happens when folks come in and want to access the business directory. And here it is. And this is kind of what it looks like. We'll let it load here for a minute. Because there is a mapping function with this. We'll let it load here for a minute because there is a mapping function with this. We're all familiar with Google Maps and Yahoo Maps and stuff. This has got part of that, which is what it's struggling to load here, and it's not loading, so you'll have to take my word for it, folks at home. There is a map in this area here that if you search a certain keyword, it will pop up and show 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. Here's these locations. And you can actually switch that to an actual picture of the business. So, it's just a way to, and I'm sorry, it's not loading here, it's, we're doing a Wi-Fi type thing here, I think, and that's the challenge. In any event, let me show you one of our local businesses. Folks are signing up every day. We're just getting started, and the challenge, as we'll talk about in a minute, that I have, is to let people know this is happening, encourage them to see the value in their participation. But I'm just going to show you one quick example of a local business, it's a unique one, that is taking advantage already of this. And this is our friend, Justin Ledmanitis, from our Trails Commission and also from our Moxy Committee. Justin is a personal chef, which is, you know, an unusual occupation, an interesting one. And he's taking advantage of this to show, to reach out to the people of Lisbon and elsewhere to offer his personal chef services. But you can see what Justin's done here. First of all, I'll just direct your attention, this is the name of Justin's operation, Sam's Own Good Cooking. And he listed at Lisbon Falls, and because Justin comes to you, he doesn't necessarily have a location, so we're not seeing the map here. But we do see that Justin's blog, his website, his business website, is listed there, and that's an important thing. If you already have one, it's just another place to put a link out there. And, you know, these icons represent a lot of different things. There's some photos, YouTube videos, Facebook, and then bookmark it in Google. So, you know, you can come in here and boom, that shows up in your bookmarks. I won't go through all those because I'm nervous about my Internet connection, but you can see where Justin already, in just a few days, has created himself a webpage here as part of our overall directory. And I'll just show you real quick. There's the hours that he's available to you to provide this service, and I'm sure he's got some flexibility with those. But he has, he's, Justin has used this as an opportunity to answer some frequently asked questions that a personal chef would get. He's got some menus and services, as I'm showing you here. He's given you an idea of what he may serve at a Kentucky Derby party, for example, or a volunteer appreciation lunch, or a community get-together. Again, just trying to get people wrapped up in what he does and get them interested in him. The last is the daily specials. And in this case, Justin is offering fresh bread. But this interesting thing right here, remember I talked about joining mailing lists and follows? Folks who want to know when Justin posts a new daily special will simply hit this click, this link here, and go, you know, to another sort of similar signup box that I showed you earlier, and they'll then be on that list. And so, whenever Justin refreshes this page and puts in a new daily special, they'll be notified of it. So, you can see where it helps to build relationships between customers and business. So, that's another thing that we can do. So, Justin is, you know, I'm very, very pleased that he's taken this opportunity, and as you can see, others are beginning to do the same. There'll be varying levels of information from all. It's there for you to use as you wish. The thing to remember is that when it searches, if you've updated recently, if you update regularly, you'll go right to the top of the list. So, there's an advantage for you as a business owner to use this page on an ongoing basis. We've all got a million things to do, but if you can carve out a few minutes to maybe do a little update on your page, it's going to show, it's going to benefit you in the long run. So, I'm going to show you, there's a community Greenville, Illinois, I believe it's Illinois.
There's your map.
Oh, there's my map. Good. See? Internet connection is just fine. And you can see that, you know, and I'm working out some glitches on this because, really, when I point on that seven right there, it's, the words are not in the right color font, and so, we're not seeing them, so we've got to fix that. And this is very much, that's a good opportunity for me to just say to you, it's very much a learning process for all of us. It's what we'll make of it. But as you can see, you know, we've got some businesses grouped here, and folks, if they were looking for convenience stores, they would find them grouped there. Or they can, again, you know, if you're looking for pizza, you can, as this shows up here, you can show, you can just do pizza, and everybody who's got pizza in their description or keywords or, is going to come up there. So, I'm going to show you Greenville. It's a community, I believe, in Illinois. I should have written that down. Yes, it is, Illinois. They have been doing this for a little bit longer than this, than us. So, I want to show you that, you know, what can become of this. First, remember I talked about coupons? This coupon was created within this software. Once I get approved as a business, I have the ability to go in and create a coupon that gets posted on the site, and folks can pull that down, print it out, and bring it in. So, this is a veterinary clinic, and they uploaded a logo, you can see here, and like Justin did, they did some mapping, they did Google, they did Facebook, they've got their website up there, they've got all their current information. It gives a, you know, kind of a mission statement, a description of their services. And again, hours, menus, in this case because it's a vet, they just listed what their services were, and, you know, a couple of different types. They have job opportunities, that's why I want to show it to you. Because once again, if I'm at home and I'm looking for work, and I'd like to work in Lisbon, and if we get full participation, we get everybody on board and working on this, then when a job opens, the folks here closer to home will be among the very first to know that. So, it's a great tool from that perspective as well. And then, here's some reviews, which it looks to me like these were maybe emails they got, but folks thanking the vet for the care that they showed their pet. So, that's kind of what we're doing. This is kind of how this thing works. And again, the real important part now is taking advantage of it, of me selling this product, and I don't mean literally, but selling the advantages of the product to our local business community. Let me go back to my PowerPoint and talk about that. Priorities from here, get as many businesses as possible to register for this service and use it as soon as possible. Get as many different categories of businesses involved. It lends itself, the platform lends itself to retail and services, but that doesn't mean construction or whatever it might be, that they can't find advantages from this as well. And if you think about it, if I'm a construction company and another company needs construction work done, they're going to expand their building, or they're going to relocate, that company, the relocating or expanding company, can post requests for proposals, bids, on their website, on this. And each one of these local contractors, if we get everybody working this the way we should, each one of them will then get a notification which says, hey, so-and-so is going to build out their building, or they're going to move some earth, or they're going to dig a hole, or whatever they're doing, and here's an opportunity for you to get some work. So, again, it's not only connecting the customers, but it's connecting the businesses as customers with each other. And get other, whoops, get other community institutions involved. And I mention this because it's just, again, it's not just for commercial use. I spoke today with one of my friends here locally who's affiliated with a local church. I really feel like that could be a great tool, too. What if I'm a new resident and I'm looking for places to worship in my community? Yeah, you can look in the phone book, you can look, but here's another place where I can look and maybe learn even more about those churches. And it's not just the churches, the nonprofits, you name it. As far as it's open to everybody like that, every business or institution in this community that's doing something for and with this community. And so, I encourage those folks to get in touch with me. How do I, whoops, sorry, folks. And that's why, I'm in the wrong place. How do I do this? How do I get people involved in this? First of all, again, I came here tonight to use this as an opportunity to reach your audience. Encourage those business people who are watching this to contact me. Get registered, trained, and trained, small T, because it's not a lot of training, because you don't need a lot of training. Today, I did some work with some local companies on this, it was about a half an hour. But get them registered, get them trained on how to use the product. I also think personal contacts between me and the businesses. If I'm in there talking with them about an issue, or if I'm just making a business visit, I've got to bring this packet with me and get them interested in that way. Weekly WebQA webinars. They do every, I think, Tuesday and Thursday or something like that, and I'll get you that information if you're interested. They do a national webinar. So, businesses, whether it's in Greenville or Lisbon, who are new to this can do that half-hour training. We also have Lisbon-specific webinars. Today is what, that's what we did. And we tried to reach as many businesses as we could, but I know I didn't reach all of them. But we tried to let as many folks as we could know that we were doing this. I probably had, I don't know, 10 or so folks on with me, getting trained. Two things, we're going to do that again in November, and we'll try to do maybe a little bit more broad, you know, notification to folks. And then, the one that was done today, it was a fantastic thing, they're able to basically just record that. So, everything that was done today is recorded, and I can share that with you. And for all information on all of that, you need to contact me, and that's 353-3000, extension 122. So, last piece of the puzzle. And I talked with Councilor LaRochelle today about this. This is all wonderful, and if we populate this thing, great, and that's, but that's only half the goal because the rest of the world needs to know that this directory exists and that they can access it. So, promote Shop Lisbon to the rest of the world. If they're not going to our municipal website, they won't find Shop Lisbon. So, how do I do it? Low-cost print advertising, maybe in the Lisbon Ledger or other similar, maybe we're doing a little piece, an affordable little piece on a consistent basis that just says Shop Lisbon and learn more at www.lisbyme.org. Low or no-cost television advertising. I know in the local cable systems, there's typically a bulletin board, a community board. This certainly qualifies for that, I'm going to pursue that. That'll show regularly at home to folks, remind them, look in. And then, work with businesses, lastly, to include Shop Lisbon in their own marketing wherever that makes sense for them. So, we're going to take those initial steps, but again, don't make any mistake, I'm fully aware, it's not enough just to populate that database, it's to get people using it, and this is the piece of it that's important to do that. So, that's what I have for you. Thanks for your time, and, how much time did I use? 20 minutes? That's a good long talk. Thank you. Any questions, I'd be happy to take them. Any questions from Council?
How was the webinar today? It was pretty well received.
I think so. It's, you know, like I said, I think the interface is so intuitive and easy that I think the folks out at WebQA are very excited about getting these webinars going, and then people just kind of sit there because, yeah, I get it. Do you have any questions? Not really, I get it. So, I think it was very much like that. We, probably 35 minutes, she showed us some basics in a lot more detail than I'm able to show you here, and I think it went well. And there's some tech issues, maybe, in certain users that we have to overcome. We had one local business that was trying to log in and couldn't. So, again, it's all part of learning how to do this, but I think those webinars can, and what I'd like to do for the webinar, that the way we did it was say, you know, you in the privacy of your office can join in. But I think what I'd like also to try is get people together in a larger, common room, you know, invite the businesses, have them come in, and then have a setup like this, and then have WebQA walk through the, you know, that way. So, we're going to try to do that in November. So, you know, it's not a be-all and end-all, as you know, to do this work and do it successfully and make meaningful change in this community, there's a lot of little things we have to do. This is one of them, and it costs us very, very minimal and costs our business community nothing.
And this is, Mark, this is something you also, like the concerts in the park could have its own.
Theoretically, yes.
And actually.
I hope Ross isn't watching because he'll be on me tomorrow morning at 8:00.
But you know what I mean, it's actually a good opportunity for the advertisement, what's involved, and who's playing, and pictures.
And, you know, Laco and the other community, you know, faith-based organizations or whatever they might be, I really believe they need to be on there, too, and we're working towards that. Thank you, Scott. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
It really does sound very useful.
It has a lot of outreach, anyway, you can go with it.
Thank you. All right, and our next item, Tyler?
Council of Communications.
Anyone here would like to speak? Go ahead, Fern.
Just want to say that we, last weekend went to the dedication into Ricker Park for the, for the Twin Towers I-beam, and the rest of the presentation, that was really well. I want to congratulate Mark, he did a speech for the council, and he did a really nice job. It was well-written and well-put out there, along with our fire chief and everybody else that spoke. It was definitely top-notch, I mean, it was, whoever sat and went through the presentation definitely was well-moved by what everybody said and what was done. And if anybody has an opportunity to drive by the park, it's beautifully done, and I think it's going to be there for a long time for everybody to remember some of the circumstances, and I wish everybody was there to listen to Mark because he actually laid it out really well. So, thank you, Mark, you actually did as well.
Thank you, Fern, I appreciate that. Go ahead, Gina.
I also attended the World Trade Center dedication, and it was an honoring event. It's something that many towns and cities across the nation are doing. Our nation was definitely changed on 9/11, and I feel proud that Lisbon has a piece of that reminder. And, you know, our public safety workers risked their life every day, nothing like New York City that day, but they risked their lives every day, and I really thank them for that, and you did do a good job on your speech. And another noteworthy item that happened here in town this week was, the Maine Supreme Court was at Lisbon High School, and I was able to attend. Very interesting, three cases that have been in the news recently were presented. The kids were kind of in and out between classes, and they were very good, very well-behaved. The Chief Justice said they were the best behaved school she's ever been to, so we should be proud of our Lisbon kids. It was very interesting. They presented the case, they were appeals cases, the kids had, that were dealing with that, had studied about the cases, so they knew a little bit more than some kids did, but very interesting, and Lisbon was very lucky to get that here, and the kids really benefited from it. So, it was very interesting.
Thank you, Gina.
I turned on paper, made that gym look really huge.
Yeah, I did, yeah.
I'd just like to thank our cameraman tonight. I see we've got a new gentleman running our camera, and with all the complaints that we've had of why these meetings have failed, I appreciate having him on board, so, thank you very much.
All right, and I want to touch on an item that we talked about earlier, which is the Thanksgiving dinner, and that's upcoming, and I usually volunteer at that, and I know Fern's been there at other times, and encourage anybody else that can give some time, a couple hours a day, to come out and scrub pots and pans with me, and, you know, you really, you'll look back on it and appreciate it more than you might think in advance, it really is a worthwhile event. People really appreciate all the work that gets put into that. So, if you have a couple hours on Thanksgiving, come out and give whatever you can, even if you can't cook, you're welcome. All right, everyone all set? All right, and our next item, Tyler?
To adjourn.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make that motion.
Do we hear a second?
A second.
All those in favor of adjourning? And opposed?
Pass.
We are adjourned.